We'll call our work session meeting to order at this time. We're here to discuss the fairgrounds under general business.
Me to lead into it.
Be fine.
Okay. As the board recalls, we had a work session a couple of months ago now regarding the fairgrounds and the operations and how the county was moving forward. And at that work session, there'd been a mention of asking our attorney to research the definitions of governing versus advisory and come back with some thoughts on that. So as a lead into that, I know that Heather has done that. And if, I think it would be appropriate if she was to identify what she's found out. And that will lead us into further discussion about, as it sits and how it could follow.
All right. I think we did look at what the definitions were for fairground advisory committee versus, or two different types, either a committee or whether there was a fair board. So those are the two things that we kind of peripherally looked at when we had that meeting. And the fairground committee, the advisory committee, I think that's probably the easiest setup. Easy setup in the sense that the board would have ultimate say over what happened with the fairgrounds. But the committee would advise the commissioners on improvements that might be needed at the fairgrounds, uses of the fairground and the facilities for a rental structure, like what the fees would be if people were actually going to reserve the fairgrounds and use them. So these are things that they're advising on. So ultimately, they would report back to the commissioners and say, this is what we'd advise to be done. And this is what we would advise would happen with all of these things I just mentioned. However, there really should be a master plan of what the county wants to have done with property that they own, the fairgrounds, in the sense, what improvements, you know, long-term do you see necessary? Long-term, what does the county want to see use of the facility as? So there would be a master plan that would give some guidance to the advisory committee as to what they would be looking for. And then they would handle basically daily operations of the fairgrounds.
Whoa, 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 whoa. You're saying the advisory committee would do the daily operation?
They'd be advising the commissioners what they would advise for the fees that would be charged. These are examples. Capital improvements that would be needed, the rental structure, uses of the fairgrounds. So yeah, that would be, like, they would be taking in potentially people who wanted to use the fairgrounds. They would make recommendations to the commissioners as to the use. The other structure is an actual board, okay? The board would still be appointed by the commissioners, but it would be something slightly different because if it was a board, then the board has a little more control over what happens with the fairgrounds. So they would set, specifically, they would set a budget, you know, standards, policies, what would be happening at the fairgrounds. So it's a little more detailed as to, and a little more control over what was happening out at the fairgrounds. So you've got those two different divergent uses or ultimately what would happen and how it would be controlled. Problem that we have right now is that we don't really have either one. So the fairgrounds, I guess you would call it the board, you know, that's operating it right now, they're a 501(c)(3), so they're an entity in and of themselves. They're not, they're not really, so they're collecting money on their own. They're handling improvements and different things on their own that have nothing to do with any money or funding that the county is giving to the fairgrounds. So you've kind of got a really weird conglomeration of some things at this point that they don't really fit into either one. And I think the confusion is coming in because you're, there's no buck stop, meaning they're not coming to you saying, hey, you know, here's, we know this is the master plan of the use of the fairgrounds, and here's what we've decided we're going to put some money into. It's, you're giving money to them, and then they're using the money and doing things on county-owned property. So you don't really have either one. You've got an independent board, and, you know, they're 501(c)(3), so they're their own structure. They're not really operating under the county commissioners for county-owned property. It's a really, I don't even know what to fit them in because they really are independent. They're able to give people receipts for money that they might pay, you know, and donate to the board, and they get a tax deduction for that, even though there's county money that is being used by them, and they're operating a county-owned facility. So you see inherently, you don't have any, there's no real structure. You've got a separate entity that is running something that's county-owned, and I don't know where the line is to say what authority they would have, because they have their own bylaws, but their bylaws are not in line with them either advising, being an advisory committee, or them being a board appointed by the commissioners. Their structure is totally different, and it doesn't meet either one of them. You've got a weird conglomeration of multiple different things that, I think you need to fit it into one or the other. Either one or the other, or that it's not even county-operated at all, meaning the county doesn't budget it, the county doesn't operate anything, and it is property that belongs to the fairgrounds. And that committee, they own it, they do everything for it. So you've got really, I'd say you really have two different ways of going. A committee that is answers to the commissioners, or you've got them being their own separate entity that is a nonprofit, and they operate their own business, which would be the fairgrounds. I don't know if there's any hybrid where you can, you know, like it is right now, where there's really no structure whatsoever.
Floor is open for discussion.
Could they not, the current, what is it, Fairgrounds, Inc., is that how they're?
I think so.
I mean, I think with our, I recall with our conversation that they were, I think they're kind of okay with being in that advisory role.
How can they be in the advisory role whenever they're making the schedule right now? How can they be in an advisory role whenever they tell a volunteer to leave the premises?
Well, and how can they?
Well, let me, can I finish, please?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, I don't know that we're actually giving them public money. I mean, we have made some decisions and some votes and taken some action to make some improvements there, but I feel like that's, the board has taken those steps, and we have seen them through, like the bathrooms were upgraded. I mean, we sat in a meeting and made those decisions to do that. So I mean, I think we're governing, and I think they would be okay advising. But where we've come to and how we've gotten here, I think, is because it, in the past, it's all been volunteer, and this conversation has never really happened, it's just been assumed one way or the other. It's county, it's fallen on the county to take it, if it's going to exist the way I believe it. And I believe, you know, we need to govern, and we need to run it through our, and that's what we've been doing, is running it through our recreation. Of course, that's been challenged with the staffing there, and then last year or so, it's kind of been non-existent because of COVID. But, and then there's an advisory role with this group as to the scheduling. They don't, it's my understanding, they haven't been keeping the schedule, this advisory group. I think that schedule has been kept upstairs, is what I understand.
It has, but it, events are approved, approved.
They take them to them, basically, for their feedback.
I've sat on those meetings where they have turned down requests.
I've don't. Who'd they turn down?
Volunteer Fire Department.
And why?
Glead Creek.
And why?
They decided they didn't, that they didn't want a mud sling over there and turned it down.
Well, didn't they, weren't there some challenges with some fees that they owed?
No, there was no challenges with fees.
Well.
They said that they were throwing rocks on the people that were standing in the concession stand, so Glead Creek went out and spent, if memory serves me, around $1,000 to set up barriers.
Who else have they turned down, and why?
Pull the minutes in, and we'll see. I can't remember all, but I remember every event, while I was on that board for three years, that every event was approved by that board. Now, there were exceptions whenever we didn't have a quorum to have a meeting to pay bills and to schedule events. That was the only exception. Now, the reason why that fairgrounds committee was set up as a 501(c)(3) because the Higgins family was donating that property and wanted the tax advantage. That is why the 501(c)(3) was set up and why it exists today, so that if someone wants to donate, that they can get the tax advantage. Now, they're doing their Form 990, they're, they're, are not following their bylaws because for several years, they did not have a meeting to elect a president, but that doesn't violate or do away with the 501(c)(3). Now, the money that they have in their accounts right now, it came from the sale, they tell me, of the lumber that was on the mountain that was the property owned by the county. So the county owned the property, we let them have the timber, and that's where they got their money for the improvements that came through. The problem that I see right now is, I agree, we need an advisory committee to advise the county on the things that we need, improvements and things of this nature, but they are not advising. They're running.
Is why I said it's a hybrid, you don't really have one or the other, and I think you, because ultimately, you know, who owns the property? The county does. So ultimately, who has the liability for what's going on out there? The county does. So I think there needs to be a bit more structure as to how this is handled, even with an advisory committee, that you have some guidelines as to what's going to happen. Also, you know, there needs to be some kind of master plan for the facility, you know, and what that's going to entail, I'm not sure, but I'm sure it's going to be multiple facets of the use of the facility, you know, different things that the county might want to see, like, kind of like a 2020, you know, projection that the county has done, nonprofits have done multiple times for the county. I think that that is something that needs to be done so that you have a general framework of what your goals might be, of what you're working towards, you know, and then a framework of, you know, what that committee would be doing on behalf of the board, you know, and then if they're working in connection with the rec department, then how does that work together? You know, what are, what are the ultimate decisions that they would make as a committee? Or are they just making recommendations? And then how does that work with, you know, it's still county-owned property, so you have, you know, a county department that is still going to be the one facilitating or operating ultimately the facility? We don't have that right now. So, you know, and obviously, that's a concern from my standpoint of liability, because whatever's happening out there, the buck is stopping right here, not with the committee, and that's a concern. And so you really do need a structure on how this is supposed to be handled. So I don't think that that is a memorandum of understanding. I think that is going to be a bit more involved, you know, and something that I probably need to figure out is, and this is something I probably talked to the school of government about, I don't want there to be an inherent conflict, because if this is an advisory committee, and they're a separate entity in and of themselves, it's a 501(c)(3), I don't know if that's a conflict, if that's going to be a potential problem, because they're advising the county, but they may be taking in donations and money from other places, but then, is that regulated? You don't regulate. The board does not regulate a 501(c)(3), that they are solely responsible for themselves. So how does that work? And it may mean that they And it may mean that they need to split that out into something separate that they have access to, that they're gonna work through, but the advisory board is not on the board for the 501(c)(3), excuse me, because you don't want that, that conflict. And that, I think, is a potential problem. So, so your layer of issues may be threefold to try to figure out, to straighten out exactly what's happening down there and to make it run appropriately as a committee, and then so that there's no issue with who's liable for what's happening. And you guys know exactly what's gonna happen, you know, if they're coming in saying, okay, well, this is gonna be our recommendation for, say they come in, you know, a policy's gonna be that they come in once a year and say, here are open spots that we have for different things and events that would happen out of the facility, and, you know, you say, yes, they want you to approve the calendar, something along those lines. Um, you know, they bring to you a fee schedule for the year and they want you to approve the fee schedule, and then you vote to approve that. That's more in line with what the advisory committee would be, but you've gotta separate out a couple of other things in order to make it run smoothly and not have this hang-up, which is, I think, what we have right now. We don't know.
Without guidelines.
Hey?
Right.
You've done a good job as a lawyer, it confused me.
[laughing]
I congratulate you. Now, the things that I'm not sure about, we're talking about the committee and the board being two different things. Let's just, for an example, say, we don't have the Fairgrounds Committee, the Fairgrounds is brand-new today, we're starting from scratch. How would you recommend we would set up the facility and how would it be run if it was just brand-spanking new?
So if it was brand-new, I would set it up where the board would appoint an advisory committee, so that what they would be doing for you, and you would appoint the people that would be on the committee, so that would come from the commissioners. So you would appoint the people. There would be a plan for the use of the facility, like, like I said, a master plan, so that you already know what your goals are gonna be five years, 10 years, 20 years down the line. If there are improvements, things that you wanna do, um, you know, uses of the facility. Obviously, those can change. The, the plan is just a guideline for things that you would wanna see happen with the facility as it aged, okay? The committee would then, as I just mentioned, you, the committee, you would make them responsible for figuring out maybe annually what the fees would be for the use of the facility. And now, think about it, you've got a multi-layered, uh, you know, payment schedule right now because you've got people potentially renting RV spots. You have use of the actual facility, so groups that are coming in and renting it, um, and the Emerson Black building, maybe somebody was gonna rent just the building, you know, and not use the actual fairgrounds, maybe there'd be a different price, you know, for that. So they would bring to you on an annual basis, when the new fiscal year started, they would come in and say, here you go, here's, here's potentially, uh, you know, the fees that we would bring in, maybe even a budget, um, uh, you know, projected budget of things that they expected. So uses of the facility, um, what things would be approved and what wouldn't, you know, their recommendations for the board to vote on. So these are the things that you would want a committee to do, so that ultimately, you're, you're making the decisions as to the use of the facility and the liability that you are, are agreeing that you're going to take on.
Let me ask this. There's 82 acres that we own, multiple buildings that the county owns, whoever donated them or whatever, donated them to the county. If you look at, why, why would you need a committee at all? We don't have a committee that runs the transfer station. We don't have a committee that runs, uh, the rec department. We don't, we don't, as a governing body, have committees that run our property. We have a committee, and ones that I'm familiar with are the Veterans Committee. We do nothing but make a recommendation to the board, and the board says yes or no. We don't, the, the county government doesn't come up with a budget for the Veterans Park, for the Veterans Committee at the park. The Veterans Committee raises separate money that is spent at the pleasure of the commissioners. So why do we even need a committee on our county facility?
You wouldn't. If you want that completely run by your rec department, um, I, I don't see why you couldn't, or you couldn't have an employee who just ran the fairgrounds, um, if you wanted to do that. So it'd either come from a department that you already had, um, with the county, or that you had someone separate to be able to handle that. So there, there wouldn't necessarily be a need, um, for a committee. Uh, the idea and thought behind this was because we already had the committee. So we're trying to incorporate them for what they've already been doing, um, basically to, to help out, uh, with either the rec department so that they weren't more overwhelmed with having to do even more, this, um, that the committee, or we'll just call them the Fairgrounds Committee right now, uh, even though we know that's not necessarily the case. But, so the committee right now is doing the same thing. They, they're doing a bit more than that, but they're providing you some of this information. So you don't have to have them, ultimately, bottom line. If you didn't want to have them as a committee, you don't have to have them as a committee.
Then I, I go back to another thing that you had mentioned, that when the, when the county proposes their budget, they have a budget for the fairgrounds. Now, that budget, the way that I understand it, is handled by the county employees, whether it's to paint a building, whether it's to infrastructure, just call it infrastructure of the building, i- is, am I correct or wrong?
It's defined as maintenance slash repair in, in the budget line. And for this current year, there's $17,580 in the budget in Fund 50.
Most of it's still there.
Most of it's still there. There's 13, or there was, $13,560 in maintenance repair, $4,000 in what's called cleaning, deposit refunds, and $20 in bank service fees. That's your breakdown.
That also includes the electric bill on the lights.
And part of our county's responsibility, when the rec department's, um, job description was redone, was running the fairgrounds or doing, what was, what was they supposed to be doing at the fairgrounds?
Well, I don't have the most recent job description, but if you read the minutes and you read the bylaws and you read everything together, there, there's a whole host of things that that employee's doing.
The bylaws of who?
Fairgrounds.
The, the fairgrounds is a 501(c)(3).
I know, but...
Yeah, but I mean, they've got nothing to do with our employees, is that correct?
Other than cooperation, I, I would say that.
But they don't come up and say, you could go mow the yard, you go paint the building?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I, I'm just looking at what's gonna be the, the cleanest way to, and the simplest and the best way for the people of Allegheny County to get this fairgrounds deal worked out, 'cause it's the largest venue that we have. Don't have COVID, it brings in basically the largest crowds we have, even larger than music on Main Street, when they have a decent event, the fire departments or these tractor pulls that we couldn't have last year. I'm just looking for a way to clean this thing up and separate who owns what for once and for all. Who owns this freezer? Who owns that freezer? Who owns, I assume there's no question about the buildings. And then who controls this money? 'Cause one of the fairgrounds meetings, they had talked to David about taking $5,000 out of the maintenance deal and putting it into a sign that may happen and may not happen. That's county money that a 501(c)(3) was gonna use for something else.
I would agree, so the easiest thing to do would be to allow the Fairgrounds Committee to continue to operate as a 501(c)(3), but then complete control of the facility and operations would belong to the county rec department. So, you know, assessing fees, collecting fees, scheduling events, all of that would come through then just the maintenance department. It would have nothing to do with the committee, so...
The rec department.
Exactly. The rec department would make all those determinations. If you don't have anybody advising you at all, fairgrounds, they can still be a 501(c)(3), they can still meet, do whatever they want to do, and then determine money that might come into them for a tax-deductible donation, then they determine how that's gonna be spent within the confines of their actual bylaws that they're operating under.
And can an individual give county money and be, and get a tax write-off?
No.
Can they give them property or money or a gift?
Well, the county's not a nonprofit, so I'm not sure how somebody would be able to give money to a, a body politic and be able to say that it was deductible. I don't think that's the case.
Well, I look at the Beamer property that was donated to the county. I, I don't know what, what their, what that, uh, family did as a write-off or whatever.
They might be able to get some write-off under the tax code, but it wouldn't be because they were given to a nonprofit. It would be some other, something in the tax code that would allow them to do that.
I have the deed here from 2005. Allegheny Fairgrounds, Inc., grantor, grantee, Allegheny County, a body politic. So a portion of it went to the Fairgrounds, Inc., 'cause they could own it, and then they've transferred it to the county.
And if it went to the 501(c)(3), that could be a tax-deductible donation, so maybe that's what they did. You know, maybe a portion went to the county, and then maybe a portion went to a nonprofit, and depending on the tax code, they definitely would be able to do a deduction under a 501(c)(3), but they might not have if they just donated to the county, or it would be a different structure.
Monica.
All right. Some of this information, I've just inherited, so I, I wasn't here to see it through, but somewhere along the line, there was a fee structure that was adopted for the fairgrounds. And this one says original fee list, and then there's one behind it says proposed. Now, this is for the barn, the building, uh, and, and sound systems, tractor deposits, there's a whole list of things on here. You look at another one of these documents that I have, it's called the Use Policy for the Allegheny Fairgrounds. And the copy that I have has a date in 2017. It's not signed. It has, it has the Board of Commissioners at that point in time's names, but it's not signed. Um, so I, I don't know if it's in effect or not, but there was a, a document drawn up. But it, it says, and this is getting back to one of the questions, it, on this document, they are referred to as the Allegheny Fairgrounds Incorporated. But then if you look at their bylaws, they're, they're defining themselves as a board. There's a couple of different references is what I'm getting to. But when you get down to the scheduling, because that was a question about county staff, on this use policy, it says, um, under number two, it says, "The parks and rec staff hired by the Allegheny County Commissioners shall be responsible for day-to-day scheduling of the facilities and calculating user fees for these events." And then it says that the parks and rec personnel will use the following procedures when scheduling events and calculating fees. So, I mean, this is a, I don't know, six or seven-page document that apparently was at least contemplated in 2017. But it utilizes a fee structure, and, and I don't know if the Board of Commissioners voted on this fee structure.
We did vote on this fee structure. That memorandum that you have in your hand was by your predecessor, and whenever it was presented to the Fairgrounds Board, they went high and to the right. Never went any farther.
You're talking about the use policy?
Yeah.
Okay.
We voted on a fee structure about a year or...
Yep.
Year and a half ago or something. And we didn't have input as a commissioners...
No.
...as to the fee structure. And I think that was when, that was asked of Karen to come up with a cost to run the fairgrounds, and that cost was to include everything. And I think she did everything except maintenance, and it was around $58,000 or $59,000.
I've got it in here.
It was, that was a rough number, but they, the Fairgrounds Committee came up with a fee structure, they had no idea what the electric bills were, what the water bills were, what, you know, all the, the costs to run it. Now, I, I don't think we're in the business of making a huge profit, you know, when we rent it, but we don't need to rent it at a loss. Even if you rent it at break-even, you're still losing money if you break-even. There's no business that can exist on break-evens.
So the Board of Commissioners adopted the fee structure? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
My memory.
Yeah, we voted on one.
We voted on, I don't know if it's that one, but I can remember we voted on a fee structure. Do you remember that one?
That was in 17?
No, that's when this use policy was put out.
When did we vote on, what's the date on that?
Last year.
There's not a date on it.
Or the fee structure was presented to us, and I don't know, I'm not gonna swear that we voted on it.
Okay, now, the information that Bobby's talking about, uh, he requested that information on October the 23rd, 2019. The information that was provided, water and sewer, $2,498.86, propane, $2,399.55, electricity, $15,500, $15,226.77, telephone, $439. It came, maintenance and repairs, $20,000, supplies, uh, work orders came down, just the work orders, $15,162.95. I don't have a total, but whenever you start adding $20,000 and $15,000 and $15,000 again, we're well over, we're close to $60,000 plus, and that is in 2019.
And that's not a true cost, that's just a rough estimate cost.
We had no, you requested insurance, they were not able to give us a, uh, any insurance. They also have the work orders and the cost and everything like that, if anybody wants to see it.
Additionally, if you're using labor, uh, through the rec department, then I don't know what you would associate, you know, the rec department expense. If you're trying to come up with a true number, then you would look at your labor costs too and determine what that might be for how much they were doing for the, the fairgrounds. So that would be in that number too, to come up with the true cost for what you're, what you're actually paying out on an annual basis.
So my contention with the fee, fee structure is, I, I think we need to get a true cost to figure out what the fee structure should be, uh, whether it be camping, whether it be a one-day event, whether it be a two-day event. And I think something that the Fairgrounds Committee at that time didn't realize, that the Emerson Black building was our third backup to the court system. So there's a priority... So, there's a priority, if something ever went wrong with one of our courthouses, that we still have to go to the Emerson Black Building. I think that's another reason that the scheduling should be done by the county people, rec department, and the fees should be collected by the rec department.
I'll jump in right here just a second. I mean, I've been sitting here trying to consume all this and think it through a little bit, and, and the committee, I mean, I think along, there's a lot more to what's going on here. That committee could be valuable in a lot of ways. I mean, it takes a lot of people to pull these events off, and they're connected to a lot of people. And then again, those, they could be raising some money on, on the other side there for various projects or various ideas. I mean, you've got all this room above the grandstands up there for advertising, and that's about $500 a year per sign. I mean, that could be some, I mean, to me, a committee like that could get out here and promote that, and make those kind of hip out in that kind of way, is what I was thinking about, and, and helping do these events.
We would think that the Allegheny Fairgrounds Committee would be doing that.
Well, they are doing some of it.
Some of it.
But I'm saying if they're, if they're, well, they're doing that advertising because they put up some new signs. But if we didn't have them, who would it be left up to?
Well, I would kind of along sort of what she said. We don't really have a master plan, so it's hard to know what each side's really up to.
That needs to happen.
And I think that's, we, you know, in order for, if you're going to have more than one party involved, you've got to get on the same page, and we just don't have a good playbook, and we haven't had. And so, for me, I think we set it up as govern, and whatever is going to protect us legally, and then we kind of look at our fees and work with our own staff and department, and then we work with them to try to say, you know, we, we, we don't want to alienate you or run you off, but here's the role, and kind of here's legally where we think we need to be. But I think Bobby touched on this Veterans Advisory Committee. That could be something you could sort of look at, because they are, they have established their own 501(c)(3) for fundraising for the memorial part of the Veterans Park. I don't know that we could go to them and ask them to spend their money for something they didn't want to, I'm not sure, but they've raised it for a certain purpose, but they don't do anything with it at the park without this board's approval. That, that's generally how that's set up, like you said.
I think we need to have this certain final approval, that's, that's for sure.
I think in order to do that, if, if I'm, I think Heather and I are kind of on the same page, in order to do that, one, they probably have to be a committee. And, and I, I heard what Mark said about, but I, I think you said governing, but I think you meant advisory, unless I heard you wrong.
Them, us govern, that committee is advisory.
Okay.
Now, one, I will say...
Which is why I said inherently.
Now, but now, there again, with the Veterans Committee, there are. And as I understand it, we, this board has control, whenever there are new committee members changing, I think we vote on it for that committee.
I think I just need to determine what we'd be allowed to do, and how, their structure might need to change a bit, so that if it was necessary to prevent there from being issues, that they would have strictly the 501(c)(3) part, and then they would handle that separate, and then there would be the advisory committee that could then work with them in regards to whatever they were doing for their nonprofit.
That would kind of be in between...
Exactly.
...the governing, the advisory, and then the ink.
Right, so that that way, the, the committee would be under the commissioners without that muddying up the water of that 501(c)(3) stuff, and you could keep it separate. And I'll, I'll get an opinion from the school of government on that part, so that we're very clear that if that's how that's going to happen, that we're not, we're not connecting that and causing a problem.
Bobby?
Hey, just for some clarification on the Veterans Committee, what advisory committee? That's, that's our headline on our bylaws, that we're an advisory committee. And you served on that board for several years, and when something comes up, if the county wants something or needs something, the Veterans Committee gets together and talks about it. And if they say yea or nay, they come to the board, make a presentation, say we agree with it, or we don't agree with it. But the ultimate decision comes from the commissioners. Now, as to the money, we've taken in two different types of money, a lump sums donations, and then we've taken in money from the sale of bricks, and those are kept in two separate accounts. The recent expenditure was when those boys tore up the, the lights. The county said that those cameras were not good enough to identify them, so the committee came up with a plan to buy additional equipment, and the committee said we would pay for that equipment, the county would install it. I think today we paid for the light, or for the cameras, but that becomes county property. Now, it's up to the county to maintain it from this day forward, but we don't do anything in that committee without coming to the board and getting input from the board. If the board says no, we don't want that, then we don't do that. We do have a, I guess we do have a long-range plan for things to happen at the, at the park. We're looking at the Bill of Rights, we're looking at the Constitution to be set up, and the commissioners have been down there, several of them, along with committee members, and come up with a general area until we get the final say-so that we're going to do this. But then that would come back to the commissioners, we would say, we would like it here, what do you think? And, and I see that as what the fairgrounds, they should say, these are some recommendations, yea it or nay it. Now, I think, too, part of this is going to have to come from you as the manager, as to how you see that you can handle this piece of property the most efficient way, the best way for the, best, for the biggest part of the people in the county. But these volunteers, if, if it's, you know, if it's the fire department, then they usually bring a lot of their people to either sell hot dogs, or park, or do whatever, but there's still, as a help to the county, volunteers to go pick up trash, to cut bushes, cut trees, just to maintain it. And I saw your crew out there today mowing, you know, bushes, and come to my house and mowed my onions about that tall.
Mine, too.
Response, if I may, just very quickly, I, I can provide you with, with a blueprint, but for me, it all starts with how this board determines how that either committee or board moves forward. And, and I don't have, you know, I, I think Heather summed it up by saying that it's kind of an either-or, either acknowledge them as an, as an advisory committee, there's some, I think you've got some examples of what an advisory committee does, or eat them the property and they operate the thing. And to me, that's, that's what it comes down to, is what determination is going to be made so that something can occur to move it forward. And I don't know if you want to give them the property, I don't know if you want to acknowledge their existence as a board, I don't know if you want to determine that they're an advisory committee and then lay the blueprint out. We can certainly do that, but I don't know that it's my recommendation or my place to recommend how they structure themselves. Once the determination is made by the governing body, we can certainly do that, I can do that all day, but I think you've got to make that decision.
Could you explain to me again, the committee concept versus the board concept?
Well, I don't want you to confuse, and I think this is what's happening, you're confusing right now that they are a 501(c)(3) and they have a board. That, that's not, them having that is not what we're talking about in a board, because the board is going to be something that the commissioners are the ones that appoint. It has nothing to do with the 501(c)(3). It would still operate similarly, but it would be under the control of the commissioners. That, you appoint the board, you set the standard for how they operate. Right now, we're, we're confusing it because they're a 501(c)(3) and we say board, that's because that's what they call themselves, and that's what they are. But the difference between that and having a committee that is advising the board is, is, is different. And I would say, from what you guys are saying, what I'm gathering is, the county doesn't want to give up the property. If the county doesn't want to give up the property, then, then the county needs to come up with the plan, and I think you guys are, because we have the rec department, and the rec department has already been set up to be the one handling the use of the facility, then I think more in line with what we're talking about would be that they would advise, that there would be a master plan, then there would be, kind of like, I don't know if you would call it policy and procedures, but there would be some kind of policy which would give them a direction as to what they would do on behalf of the board. So, if they are setting up or making recommendations for what the fees would be, if they're making recommendations for the use of the facility, if they're making recommendations for rules and policies that would be handled at the facility, if there were issues out at the facility, like a conflict involving maybe a neighbor or something, how they would handle that. But ultimately, they make recommendations to the board, and then the board votes on what the fees would be. The board votes on the policies that would be used at the facility. So, I, I think we need to, we need to separate that. Don't confuse a board, you know, advisory committee, advisory board, all these things are getting confused together. And I, I know it's hard to understand, because they already are a board, because they're a 501(c)(3) already. So, inherently, we have, have a lot of conflicts with bylaws, we have a conflict with different entities, we have a, a conflict with what the board actually is expecting of them right now. And, and then they have an expectation about what they're supposed to be doing, that maybe doesn't, that conflicts already with the board. So, from what I'm hearing you say, you really do, your idea is, the rec department is where it would operate from, the use of the facility, the fees, all of that, but you'd have a committee, like the fairgrounds board, that would then make recommendations to the commissioners to vote on all of the things that they would advise you on. And if they wanted to have a separate 501(c)(3) that would be a different organization that maybe some of the committee were on or otherwise, then that should be governed in and of itself separately, and have nothing to do with an advisory committee, or the rec department, or anything else. So, you're, you're structuring it as, it would be an advisory committee, they would make these recommendations. It'd be run by the rec department, but ultimately, the decisions as to what happened with the facility would come from the commissioners.
So, were you, would you recommend the word committee or the word board?
Committee.
Committee.
Because I think you're confusing right now with them being a separate board for themselves, because they're a 501(c)(3).
Just one question. Just say, for some reason, you know, groups of people start out at 50 people, and they dwindle down to five workers or 10 workers. What would happen if this board just dissolved, and then somebody wanted to give $50,000 to improve the fairgrounds? How could that money be received into the county?
Well, depending on how they wanted, if they wanted a tax advantage, I think they'd have to figure out how they would be able to do that with IRS code, because if you're not a nonprofit, then there may be some issues with them donating it, depending on the deduction what, that they wanted. And I'm no tax expert to be able to tell you that for sure. But I don't, I, I don't think that I see that the fairgrounds board, as it stands right now, they already have money, so they would inherently have a problem if they decided they were going to disband, because they already have money for which they have a charitable, charitable purpose that they'd have to spend it for. So, I don't, I don't necessarily see them agreeing that they want to disband, so I just think it needs to be structured just slightly differently, so that we're not confusing that nonprofit part with the committee that answers to the board, you know, the commissioners, and then that is through the rec department.
Chairman, if I may. Let's, let's review how we've been working it in the recent past. Megan, whenever she's Parks and Recreation. If someone wanted to schedule an event, they went to Megan, they paid their deposit. Megan mowed the yard, Megan changed the sign, Megan opened up the facility, Megan went in after the event was over, made sure that the bathrooms were clean before she returned her deposit. That was Parks and Recreation. They were doing all of it. Now, we had it set up, whenever someone wanted to come in and schedule an event, they made the deposit, and they showed they had proof of event insurance to protect the county. All that was done through Parks and Recreation. Megan and I opened up in 2019, whenever we get off the interstate, Megan and I were there at 0500. Nobody from the Fairgrounds Committee was there. She was running it.
May I ask a question to that?
Sure.
This is just my lack of understanding, so if I'm wrong, tell me.
Sure.
In the scheduling of events, it was my understanding that there was a timeframe that played into it, and if you got your request in within a certain timeframe, then that request went to the Fairgrounds Board for consideration.
That's correct.
But if you did not get it in, in a timely fashion, and it was in between the meetings, there was no called meeting, that decision to schedule that event fell upon the rec director.
That is correct.
So, we had, we had a body of whatever you would describe them as, in some occurrences, making a decision on an event, and then you had an individual on, on other occasions to schedule an event.
May I elaborate on that? The reason why the Parks and Recreation Director at that time became the chair of the Fairgrounds Committee was because the committee chairman quit showing up. So, he assumed that responsibility and had Megan assume a responsibility as the secretary.
And you couldn't get a quorum, couldn't?
Couldn't get a quorum for, I believe it was six, four months from January till April of 2019, so we couldn't get a vote to even pay the bills. So, the Parks and Recreation Director, on his own initiative and against the procedures that we had at that time, authorized the bill payment. Now, for the bills of the Fairgrounds Committee, and it was during this period, whenever, if, if they, if they objected to an event, they said, "No, we canceled the event."
That, that's what I'm going towards, is if, if they are a, an advisory committee, should they be scheduling the events?
No.
Because that, to me, is a governing act. Now, I, again, I've been here a year and four months. I haven't heard of an event, of course, with this past year's... I haven't heard of an event, of course, with this past year is not the best example, but you guys tell me, has there been any discussion prior to 2020 about the Board of Commissioners approving events, or has that remained strictly within the fairgrounds definition and the rec director?
It was the rec director after the last blow up.
That's what I'm trying to get at. We're citing different, you know, practices that these various things do. Fee structure, you said you'd voted on it. I know that it's changed in the year that I've been here, so I don't know if that is a most recent vote, but I do know that the fee structure was identified as a change. Sounds like they've never been presented to the Board of Commissioners for approval. Sounds like that there was other methods. So what Heather's saying, I think, is correct. It's kind of a blend of how it's been operated. And the reason we're talking about it today is, personally, I'd like to move this thing forward, whichever way we need to do it.
I think fundamentally, I think you need to have a structure so that there's no confusion as to who in the public, if they're going to do anything at the facility, where do they go? Who do they talk to? Right, you need-
It's Parks and Recreation.
Right, but you need to have that structure set up so that, you know, everybody knows. They don't go to the fairgrounds committee to talk about it. The buck stops with the rec department. That's where things are going to come from. You know, obviously, if there was a committee, they make recommendations for you to approve, so if there's changes in fees and that kind of thing, if you wanted to set up a policy. But ultimately, for anybody, they need to know that they have to go to the rec department in order to get approval of what they're going to be doing. It's county-owned property, and the county shouldn't be necessarily, if you want to retain this, they shouldn't be leaving it up to somebody else to make the determinations as to who gets to use it and who doesn't. There could be recommendations and policies, you know, that are made for that, yeah, sure. But we don't have that at this point. And so I think there's a huge confusion as to, for the public, where do they go? Who do they talk to? How does this work? And we don't really even know. I think we're at the point where, we've had some policies, we do it this way, it's been kind of this way, but we have multiple possibilities of a fee structure that have been discussed. But ultimately, it's the commissioners who determine this. This is county-owned property. You don't need to leave it up to anybody else. This is for you to determine, and that is either by your vote or through the rec department being in control. You're getting recommendations from a committee for things that you don't need to be looking into on a regular basis. That's my sense, and I think to clear up any confusion as to how things should be operated, that's what you need to be looking towards. That would be my recommendation.
Can I ask?
Yes, sir.
What about the Lions Club Pavilion? Is that settled now, as to who rents it out, who reserves it? Is that now, how's that done now?
That portion is worked out. The county handles that.
So the county handles all of those scheduling, those events, collecting the fees, giving the key, checking to see that they didn't destroy it?
That's right.
Isn't basically that what we're talking about with the fairgrounds?
Yes.
The thing that I'd like to mention is, if it's identified that the rec director, and I'll use the rec director, position specifically, if you vested the power in that position to make those decisions, then you've already done that. But I don't know that you've done that. I would welcome any comments, but the rec director, and the way I look at it, should be kind of a liaison between the Board of Commissioners and the fairgrounds group. And whatever the, and I'm going to use the term advisory committee of the fairgrounds puts together, then maybe the rec director comes before the board and identifies these recommendations or suggestions. You all, as a body, the governing body, you vote on those methods. So I don't know how it came about, it doesn't matter, it was here, it's here right now, but I don't know that the rec director needs to be the deciding factor in this. I think they should certainly be the liaison, but I don't know that they should be the determining factor on who schedules what and what rates are and all that.
I think we can all agree at this table that we'd like to see that fairgrounds open every weekend to some kind of event out there all the time. It'd be great to get that back in gear. And we've debated, had a good debate here this evening about this whole situation. And if I, is it consensus to go for the committee, advisory committee, and not a governing outfit? Is that what the board wants to do?
If I understand what this slick-tongued lawyer you're talking about-
I don't want to give up no deed.
I don't want to give up no deed. No, to me, they are an advisory committee, and that is it strictly.
Trying to take all this in.
Yeah, Mike, there's going to be a test on it in the morning.
I think that whatever happens, it should be as smooth as possible for somebody to rent the place, make it simple for them, have a simple person, rec department says, checks their calendar, yes, this day's open. Now, you're not a terrorist organization, so yes, you can come. The fee is X number of dollars.
And it's published on the county website.
I don't know what the exact pecking order is. I mean, you've got committee people that talk to people, but here's what I'm trying to say. I think the parks, if one person needs to be in charge of all these events, booking from top to bottom, it needs to go through one. Use two, the fairgrounds down some, and Megan picked up the short end of the list on the weekends. I forget just how was that, John? She had, they went to her on the weekends on a short notice or something like that?
She, she would go out, she was working on the weekends, she would go out, open up the facility, if they needed toilet paper or something like that, she was running in, she was doing that, she was on the call on the weekends, with no extra pay, no time off, no compensatory time off or anything.
So we're all in agreement on advisory committee? Is that where we are?
She did get the comp. When could she take it, though?
That I don't know. The only change in that, that small window, when there was a thought about adding an employee, because when she was a one-person department, she was exempt, or non-exempt. But I just want to make sure I understand, because I'm-
Parks and Recs is right, as far as I'm concerned.
But do you want them to have the final say-so on the scheduling? Or, I mean, that's-
Kind of being the advisory committee?
I'm looking for direction. We've identified the Parks and Rec person to be, you know, the one person that we're looking to.
What I look at, whenever you say advisory committee, they come in and advise that we will not have naked wrestling up there scheduled, but other than that, we'll schedule everything but naked wrestling. You know, if they want to, if somebody wants to schedule an event for naked girl fitness with an itch, they advise against that. But lawnmower races, things of this nature that have been going on up there, the fiddler's convention, there's no need to go to them.
Sir, who's going to be the person between the advisory committee? If there is a person, how does the advisory recommendation get to this level?
Hang on just one second. Back up just a second. I don't know that every Parks and Recs director, and I'm going to use this comparison, you don't want a mud sling, a hat man up there two weeks before you put a rodeo in there. I mean, that is just a bad, that's just a bad situation.
And they could recommend against that.
You had that to happen, you know, one time, and I think there's people, we need to have that conversation in there, about the authority of who's controlling that, you know? I mean, nothing wrong with a mud sling, that don't get me wrong, but it needs to be a month away from a rodeo or something to give that ground time to-
And I would expect them, I would expect the fairgrounds committee to come in, after looking at the schedule, and say, Parks Recreation Director, this is a wrong way to go, because ground will not have enough time to settle. And if Parks Recreation Director says, nope, too bad, then they go to the county manager or they're in front of us at our next meeting.
What if it's too late?
By our mistakes.
Then we may have the wrong person for Parks and Recreation.
And that's why I'm trying to connect.
Well, I think you need a communication with Parks and Recs and the committee.
I agree.
A working relationship to solve some of that. Make sure that gets solved.
In my mind, before, the events that come in, we'll single out events for them, when the events come in, there should be communication between that Parks and Rec person and that advisory committee, and they should have all the information that they need, in my mind, to bring to this governing body and identify. And that provides a decision.
If there's a problem.
Yeah.
If there's no conflicts-
We'll always have some small-
-between us and them, then it's a schedule. It's okay.
But if you do it for all of them, you don't have discrepancies.
I think, John, if, it's chain of command.
Yeah, well, if someone comes in and they request an event, you've got a bulletin board on the county website. It's up there. If they see a conflict, or they don't think that it's improper, they go to the Parks and Recreation Director and say, hey, this is going to be a conflict, you're going to have problems, you better reconsider this. If he doesn't reconsider, they can always bring it to you, and ultimately, they can bring it to us.
So you need to have, that's where this master plan or a policy comes into effect. Because if you say, these are the prohibited activities at the fairgrounds, then you don't have to come and keep asking permission. It would be that the public would know they go to the rec department in order to get the, to schedule something or to do it. It doesn't need permission. Now, if it was something that was questionable, sure, then you have an advisory committee. They know the uses and things that would happen typically at the fairgrounds. So that's what they would be there for, to consult with and to say, whatever. And maybe it's a policy that the rec department would communicate when an event is scheduled to make sure that there's not inherent conflicts or problems. But you already have a policy of things that you know are going to be prohibited. If it's questionable, let them work together to try to figure it out if it's okay. And then you have the chain of command of how it goes. Now you've taken care of that being a problem, of when it might be scheduled, or how quickly, or whatever. You know, there's policies that you already have available to the public, that they will know this is a yes or a no right away if they look at it. Or if it's questionable, that's where you get this advice, and then it goes up the chain.
I think one thing that the Parks and Recreation need to remember is county functions come first. Example, the courthouse. Example, COVID as a shop place. To me, that trumps anything that somebody would want to use the Black Building for. Is that a right assumption, or?
I think for the courts, it is, because you're in a CCOOP agreement for the use of the court facilities. Reason I bring up what I bring up is, I don't have the experience or history with specifically fairgrounds, but I have dealt with a lot of zoning issues. And I know we're on a different path, but I'm going to try to provide you. An event at the fairgrounds is kind of like a special use permit. There's similarities in that. If you want, if you want to grant the approval process with the rec director, so be it. And if that process involves a chain of command, and ultimately, it comes to the board if there's a problem, so be it. I'm used to a little different, and just because I'm used to it doesn't mean it's how it has to be. I can adapt. But you have your advisory committee, and you have your rec director, and they communicate. And my hope is that you don't have the same events going on at that fairground all the time. I'd like to see it grow into more events. So when you're detailing out, this can happen and this can't, I think it's a good problem to have when you have an event that you haven't anticipated yet. So, you know, the advisory committee makes the suggestion or recommendation to the rec department. The rec department takes that advice, puts it into an informational type packet, lets you guys be aware of what it is, who it is, how they're going to do it, all that good stuff. And then you have that ability to act on it. You've got an advice from the advisory committee, you've got a liaison that's provided you the information, that does all the background work, and you've got the control determining an event.
And we got the legal, we're covered legally if something happens, insurance-wise, which is an iffy thing right now?
No.
No, I think there's a form specifically-
The form specifically states that they have to have event insurance, and before that event is scheduled, they have to show proof of insurance.
So that covers us if, okay.
And I don't see any reason to change that.
I just want to be sure that, you know, carnival comes, somebody gets hurt.
We can't charge the same rates if we got to provide liability insurance. That's left up to each venue that comes to-
I think the county probably overall has a liability policy that would cover property they own. It's just, this is a specific event, and you want to make sure that event's covered, and it's already in your application. So that's nothing new, you don't have to do anything extra for that, it's already there, and you're already asking for it.
Some of these events are, liability insurance is outrageous.
What if somebody wants to rent the Black Building or the concession stand-covered area for a family reunion? Now, do they have to have insurance?
Yes.
Okay, if they go to the wellness center and rent that building, do they have to have insurance?
No, the wellness center already provides the insurance. They don't, from my understanding, they don't make specific events unless maybe it's something outside, they might make them have an event, like the bicycling thing, I'm not sure, but they might make them have a separate event policy. But something happening inside the building, they're taking the liability on their insurance policy for that.
What, if we went with that route, what would the procedure be? Would that, would the rec department person go ahead and give the paperwork to that person? They would, where would they bring their paperwork back? Where would they pay at? Would they pay here at the county?
The way it's always been, that rec person, they give them the documents and they receive.
Okay.
And the payment.
They get put on the calendar that day?
Yeah.
And that's a good point. If you guys, as the governing body, do not want to have involvement with those decision-making processes, until they reach a certain point, then that would be the protocol, in my mind. If you want to be involved in every event, whether it's debated or not, then you establish a different protocol.
I think that gets to be a little bit-
Micro-managing.
Yeah, too much micromanaging there. And, you know, a lot of times, people will want to have an event before we would meet again, or before, you know, like they had that earthquake relief thing, and it was kind of put together in a la- and it was kind of put together at the last, last minute and-
How would, how would that have been covered under insurance?
Well, yeah, it depends on who was putting on the event. And that would determine, so if it's county, then the county has the insurance for it and it's not being charged separately or being required to provide an event, you know, insurance policy specifically because the county's using the county's property.
Yeah, but that was just a group of people that got together that created this-
They should have had a event insurance.
Right. Then if it's separate and it's not the county, then they should have had a separate policy for that based on the application that they, they would have submitted. I, I would argue that regardless of when they're going to use the facility, they have to submit an application, even if it's tomorrow. Because how do you prove what happened at the facility unless you have something in writing to prove who was the person who instituted the, the event and?
That's, that's a, a theory that we've never, that's never crossed our minds, my mind, that they, that they need that application filled out to tell you what the event is.
We control the property, the gates should be locked until the event time.
And that would be one of the requirements.
And the only reason we don't lock the doggone gate is because Boy Scouts won't keep a key.
Well, that's a whole nother issue is locking the gates and not locking them.
Let's go back to our advisory. Just, the only consensus from everybody, but show of hands here in a minute. And the consensus, are we in agreement to make Advisory Committee and we stay the governing body?
Yes.
Does I say that right? Everybody's in favor of that? Show of hands, please. This ain't no vote, this is just consensus. No vote. Is that where we need to be?
I think it's where you need to be, but I think it needs to be followed up with more, not, maybe not today, but there has to be some type of blueprint, in my mind, that provides this Advisory Committee on going straight, turning right, turning left. Because all of these other informational documents contradict a lot of that.
Is that blueprint going to be drawn up by you two?
I think we can certainly provide some thoughts on it. But tweaking it will be the Board of Commissioners' responsibility, in my opinion.
I'll put your heads together and, and we'll present it back and you can tweak.
To, to go back to one of the earlier points, the fundraising monies that the Fairgrounds I was going to leave it at Fairgrounds collects, because I don't know how to term it at this committee. Separate, as I heard it.
They don't collect any money. That event writes the check, it's to the county.
I'm talking about the donations or, I mean, they have a fund balance outside of what the county's budget number is.
If I give them a check today for a million dollars, that's their money because they're a 501(c)(3). I am giving it to an entity.
And that's why I'm saying that's, that's not in the equation because that's the benefit of them being a 501(c)(3).
Correct.
There's other 501(c)(3)Cs in the county that somebody could make a donation to that group and then that group could turn the money over to the county.
Yep.
Absolutely.
And that's what, that's what happened on that deed transfer in 2005. Fairgrounds donated it to the county. But the way they got it was a donation, and I've got that deed also, and I can't remember.
It's probably for tax purposes because they got a better write-off to donate it through a nonprofit than they would to a body politic, a county. I, I just don't think there's as much of a tax benefit for doing that. The nonprofit, yes, and they get a write-off and that's, that's important to people who are donating to 501(c)(3)'s. It's because of that tax benefit. When you guys buy a ticket, a raffle ticket, you know, it generally says on that raffle ticket, there's so much of it that will go towards, you know, that nonprofit and you get to deduct a certain amount from your taxes for it. Well, that'd be the same thing with the Fairgrounds and obviously, we don't want to take that away from them. That's, that's them.
And take it away from the county. We don't want to take it away from the county.
No.
Included in this, just since it's laying here, fee structure, if, if it would make my mind feel better if I knew when a fee structure was adopted or presented to the Board of Commissioners. And we can look back.
Ask, ask the Snoop here, she can go back and investigate.
I think you need to start looking in 2019, about October, if I remember right.
But as, as it's been determined today, there is an existing fee structure out there. I don't know if you voted on it or not. But if you didn't-
Well, it's in that application.
I, I get that.
But I remember the Fairgrounds doing that.
What I'm saying is, is that's one of the things that a governing body should adopt. So if it's nothing more than taking what you, you got and adopting it, then you met that.
If I remember right, we went to $35 for over, the, the camping spaces.
I remember at a Fairgrounds meeting, they, they increased about across the board because everything was really cheap.
But there's a weekly rate too, isn't it?
Yes.
I believe.
It's not, it's not on either structure I have.
Well, that week, weekly rate came about whenever somebody came up and wanted a, a weekly rate. And it wasn't the people that we had problems with. It was a visiting nurse that came in. She needed a campsite for three months because she, her, it was a temporary job here at the hospital for three months. And the county manager at that time and Megan came up with a figure, bounced it off of us, and that's the way we got him. And that, that was the first monthly figure that I've, that I've ever heard of.
I don't know what that is because I don't have it, but I, I don't know if, I know that there was Fairgrounds, but we, you, we had this information. I don't know if they-
Drew, give that to Michael.
I just, I think we've got direction now.
Are we good on everything?
Let's get some dinner.
Moving on down, we'll leave this reading there. County Manager's comments.
This meeting?
This meeting is on the agenda.
I've had a lot. I don't have any more. Thank you.
Mr. Comment?
See the camping fees in there?
County Comment? No comments? Your motion to adjourn?
I'm moving.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor. Be back.